...of August 19th. Six thirty-one, we have two requests for approvals not required to be endorsed. One at 288 Clock Road Extension, the other one at 149 Arnold Road. Six thirty-five, we have requests for waiver of site plan from Old Sturbridge Village. Requests for waiver of site plan to demolish an existing barn and build a new structure in the same location. Then at six fifty-five, we have another waiver of site plan request from G and L Group, LLC for a new full-service restaurant at 139 Main Street. After that, we'll have the town plan update, old and new business, and then the adjournment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of August 19th? Any questions, comments, changes? If not, we have a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second that. On favor? Very good. Okay, the first A and R is on 288 Clock Road Extension?
Yes, so this is an A and R for the properties owned by Mastriani and Judith Ross, or I should say to be conveyed to Mastriani. So this conveyance is pursuant to a court order that grants the Mastriani's parcel A, the small strip shown in the middle there, to provide waterfront access and also provides them with boat dock rights. And there is a provision in the Mastriani laws under Chapter 41, Section 81R that says a planning board may waive strict compliance with its rules and regulations where it's not inconsistent with the subdivision control law. And the subdivision control law is to be able to create lots on roads that provide you adequate frontage and safe access. So in this case, they'll both retain their same adequate access. The frontage, however, will go down to sixty-five feet on the Ross property. However, since I do not believe that it will derogate from the intent of the subdivision control, I would recommend the board grant the waiver as requested under 81R and endorse the plan so that it can be recorded and the land conveyed pursuant to the court order.
Any questions or comments about that?
Just context, who is the Mastriani party in this?
They own another property across the street, and so they had a right to use the property to access the waterfront. And after many years, the new trustee of the Ross Trust wanted them to sign some papers indicating what they could and couldn't do on that access way. So they filed with the court stating that Ross really didn't have the right to do that, and they prevailed. So the court actually required that they convey that strip to Mastriani so that it can't happen in the future.
So it was a sort of an written easement beforehand, or a paper street?
It was an easement. It was an easement for water access.
Okay.
Oh, it was under the control and owned by Ross?
Ross, that's correct. So now it's actually being conveyed to Mastriani so that that can't happen in the future.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to endorse the A and I as described by Jean? So moved.
Second.
Other discussion, all in favor? Okay, very good.
I'm gonna stay at the end, Sue, and sign these. All right, and the next one. And the next one we have is from Michael Sausick, and this is for land on Arnold Road. And you can see they're carving off Lot Two from the original lot, which is shown as Lot One. Lot One already contains a home. They both have more than adequate frontage, and since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend you endorse the plan as submitted.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Lot Two is gonna be a separate building, Lot B, that is gonna sell that.
Sell or give to somebody, I'm not quite sure, but yeah, separate lot.
Good. Okay. Very good. No further questions. Then a motion to endorse the approval of not required document?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, all in favor? Very good. Okay, next we have a waiver of site plan request for Old Sturbridge Village.
So Sarah, I'm sorry, Parks, Sarah Parks is here from Old Sturbridge Village this evening in place of Bill Goddett to go over their proposal to tear down and rebuild a barn. The application has been reviewed by staff, and no concerns were noted. This went through the Conservation Commission public hearing process. However, the DEP file number did not come in until 7:00 PM the night of the hearing, so they couldn't close the hearing and grant the order. So it had to be continued to the next meeting, but I don't anticipate any changes. Sarah will explain the proposal, but I have no concerns with the waiver of site plan requested.
Very good. Sarah?
Good evening. So as Ms. Buwan stated, we have an existing structure that we've used for forty-plus years to house the village's draft horses, which as anyone who's been to the village is probably familiar with. We have a conveyance that goes around the village carrying visitors pulled by these horses. The building itself has served us well for many decades. It's now past the point where it can be safely maintained for us to provide an adequate home for these animals. So our proposal is to tear down the existing structure and replace it with a new structure in the same location. In addition, putting up both a hay storage structure, that's essentially a canvas structure, and also designating a new area for manure composting that's near the barn. In speaking with conservation, we've located both the manure composting area and the hay barn, or the hay storage location, at a greater distance from the wetland area than we are currently using. So we're kind of trying to shift things farther away from the water. The footprint of the barn itself is essentially, as you can see on the screen, there's a very tiny existing building designated there. We're largely following that footprint. The current structure has an overhang area that we're proposing to enclose as part of the new structure, and then there will be an additional extension of the shed roof just beyond that. So the building in terms of square footage will be a tiny bit bigger than the existing structure, but is essentially located in the same footprint.
Great. Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No. So the primary use of this structure would be just for the storage of hay?
No, so two structures, two separate uses. The building that we need to take down and replace is used primarily to house four draft horses. We're anticipating that it would be used for that purpose for, you know, the next multiple years. We're trying to, we've designed the structure so it can later have other uses for us.
So it's primary, that primary use would be for...
That primary use is for horses.
Bringing a horse up.
Correct. And then the hay storage structure is a separate shelter logic type.
And there's some isolation between that and composting as well?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Okay, do we have a motion then to grant the site plan waiver? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a waiver of site plan from G and L Group, LLC, 139 Main Street.
Hi, guys, how are you?
Introduce yourself for the record.
How are you? What we're trying to do is take...
Jean will give you an update. She'll introduce it, and just want to have you introduce yourself for the...
I'm Gary, and hopefully the future owner of Trail Dusters.
Thank you.
So Gary is hoping to open a fifty-four-seat restaurant, and this will be in the former Mama Italia restaurant space, as well as the Fish, I think it was called the Fish Warehouse? Fish World. Fish Warehouse, Fish World. And so he's actually proposing to take over both of these spaces. Mama Italia had twenty-four spaces in the restaurant that is now closed due to the fish tank leakage from Fish World into the restaurant space. And so they, and they were actually relocating to another location when that happened. So I, in trying to find the old permits to determine how many seats we could have based on the parking capacity, I found in 2004, there was a notation that any expansion in the seating in the restaurant had to come back before the board for further approval. So I asked Gary to come in this evening. So we did review the plans that were on file. I enclosed a copy of the site plan in your packet, and based on a review of the uses that are present on the premises in conjunction with our parking requirements, we determined that Gary could fit fifty-four seats in the restaurant. So there would be some bar seating and then some table seating as well. Any further expansion of that, he'd have to find some off-site parking because we're basically at our limit there. This does leave a buffer of a few parking spaces. For instance, the accountant under the bylaws is required to have six parking spaces. There's usually only one or two employees there at a time, and the security company, if anyone is there, it's one person. So we do have a little extra. However, Glow Cycle is very busy early in the morning, and then she has some evening classes as well. So I have no concerns on, you know, the parking working out. I think with any new business, any new restaurant especially, it's going to be very busy in the beginning, and we won't be able to accommodate the capacity, but I think that will kind of level off after a few weeks as it usually does. So the parking will meet the zoning bylaw requirements. Gary is aware of the necessity of working with the Board of Health to have his kitchen layout approved and receive his food permits. He will be applying for a liquor license with the Board of Selectment and ABC, and no major staff concerns were noted, other than that the fire inspector, Jen Ash, actually met on-site, as did the building inspector. So they went over all of their requirements for exit lighting and things of that nature. So with that, Gary can give you a little more detail.
No, I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay.
You know, making it the one space has, of course, changed everything, so.
Right. I just have a question about the parking spot. How many parking spaces are there in that?
There are thirty-six parking spaces on the property. So Guerreri Jewelers needs 3.5, Glow Cycle needs four, Dubraye, the accountant needs five, the security office needs 1.1, and then the trail dusters will need eighteen.
And the eighteen allows the fifty-four seats.
Allows the fifty-four seats. I actually, oh, sorry, Sue, I actually have my parking calculations on page two of my report. So the total required is thirty-one point six, so I round up to thirty-two. And there are thirty-six parking spaces provided, including the handicap accessible spaces.
Will you be open lunch and dinner, or...
Lunch and dinner, okay, yep.
Would you be, what percentage do you anticipate of takeout business?
It's a tough call here in Sturbridge because I'm not real familiar with the area. Usually, at my other restaurant currently, we do probably about twenty-five percent, thirty percent of takeout. So I mean, we'd like to say we shoot for that, but I mean...
Which are your intentions?
Sturbridge seems to be more of a dine-out town rather than a takeout town from what I can see so far, so.
It depends. My experience, it varies. We do have some restaurants in town with a large proportion of...
It seems a lot of the places really have takeout.
Yeah, of course, weather-related, you know, winter.
Mama Italia, the people would be coming in and getting the food and taking it out. So I think every kind of a restaurant does a lot more of that now.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, and no bearing on what you're saying tonight, what style of food are you serving?
We call it country comfort food. So it's your steaks and your, yeah, steaks, seafood, you know, just, there's a copy of the menu around here somewhere, I think.
That's on Board of Health, we didn't get that.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
What kind of, in a customer call comes in, sits down, do you anticipate this to be casual dining, or how long do you think a turnover of a table would be?
About, probably forty-five minutes to an hour.
Forty-five minutes to an hour?
Nothing is frozen in our place, so everything is fresh-made and cooked to order, so to speak, so.
Yeah, the reason I ask is basically, you know, queuing for parking and sort of thing like that. If you, you know, if your customer base may stay for two hours on the average, that may...
Yeah, obviously, we want them out in under forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
And that's our goal, but most of them usually take about an hour from what I've seen at my other restaurants, so.
If I could just add, one of the kind of good things is that the offices close at, one closes at three and one closes at four, and Guerreri Jewelers closes at 5:30 Tuesday through Friday and three on Saturday. Of course, he has extended like Christmas hours, but for the most part, for the evening dinner hours, the plaza, other than Glow Cycle, and she has two classes in the evening.
And it can be assumed that they're, they've been questioned or in discussions with this as well?
I met with the owners, and he actually went around...
And their tenants?
He went around, spoke to all the tenants. I was most concerned about Glow Cycle and how it would impact hers, and we got a really good handle on her numbers of how many people she has at a time, based on her number of bike stations that she has, so. And she said her busiest are the morning, and then she has two evening classes that are busy but not as busy as the morning ones. And if you notice on the site plan, too, there's parking behind the building, so Gary's employees are going to park behind the building, so as not to take up any of these kind of time locations.
And how many spaces? It looks like on this plan that there are four?
There are four. If you go back there, they've almost kind of made an extra one where you can pull in when I...
And the reason I ask is because this is a proposed site plan, not as an as-built.
Well, it's the one that was approved back in 2017, so this isn't even his plan. I pulled it from the approved file.
Yeah, I understand this proceeds this gentleman's appearance here.
Yeah, there's actually another space in the back that they've kind of made in addition to this four. And then, so they're going to designate the ten over on the side for the Glow Cycle is the way that I understand it when I met with the property owner.
Okay, because this is what I'm seeing here. I'm not familiar with the back of the structure.
Yes, yes, yep.
If there was any differences from the proposed and as-built?
Not in the front of the building, just in the back, that one, kind of one extra space that...
Yeah, there was a propane tank in that, in that one spot.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, now there's only one.
Shows here oil tanks.
Yeah, yeah.
One was taken out, so that's where that kind of that extra...
So there's no bullet there now, or...
No.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
No.
I'm motioned, thank you. If not, we have a motion then to waive site plan approval. And again, as it was with Old Sturbridge Village, I didn't mention it, but we do have the five conditions that would be standard conditions to, would be part of this approval. So I think it's already in there.
Yes, and I provided this to Gary as well.
I have one more question. Sorry. Is there any agreement or plan with any other nearby location for parking if this gentleman turns out to be wildly successful in this business, and I hope you are?
Yes, yes.
How would, how would that overflow occur, and is there any, as the property owner...
They've already had conversations with the neighboring plaza, which most of those establishments close very early in the afternoon.
That would be on the same side of the road or adjacent across the road?
Same side of the road, and there's a sidewalk connecting the two. So we have had those conversations. They've met with that property owner as well, so.
You're right, I would love to.
Yes, yes.
So we made some to see if that, you know, hopefully that, in the future.
Country Comfort sounds like a good plan to me.
I mean, it's a lot of the menu from my other restaurant, which has been, you know, hugely successful, but this is Sturbridge, so trying to just bring something a little bit different that isn't already in Sturbridge. I mean, you know, Porter House, Cedar Street Grill, those are probably gonna be, I don't wanna say competitors, but those are, that's, you know, the Kaizens and Enricos and, you know, it's all a different menu than ours is, but you know, Porter House and Cedar Street Grill are pretty much, I mean, you're gonna be able to go in dressed like we all are here now. This is not, you know, a black tie affair or anything like that, so.
I know we have a lot of pub-like food items.
So yeah, we're gonna just take it one, one level above the pub, but bring it down below, you know, say shoes.
Black tie.
Thank you.
That's what we need.
So you already have a motion, the second, I believe?
I'll second.
Did you make a motion?
Sure, I did make a motion.
Yes.
Second.
Sorry.
Very good. Thank you. Good luck with it.
Good luck, Gary.
Thank you, guys. If I can get up out of this chair now. The bulkhead collapsed at our house.
There's an elevator.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, take the elevator.
When we walked in and she said there's an elevator.
You wouldn't have been up here yet. I'm just letting you know I probably would have...
It says it's only a hundred and seventy pounds. It felt like it was four hundred when we were moving it this morning. It's not installed, we just took it out of the truck.
Are you working, are you two...
I'll be fine by morning, but yeah.
That's my husband.
It's your husband, so you'll be involved too, huh? It's the little O two K.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the town planner update. Anything new?
I really don't have anything new. I've been, I mean, I have updates, but nothing, nothing that I'm necessarily doing for you, but working with the Historic Commission. We have quotes that we're reviewing for more survey work for our historic preservation efforts, and I am working on the open space plan with the Open Space Committee. We have scheduled our public forum for November 12th at Town Hall. We will be having a photo contest as a way to encourage attendance. We did that last time, it worked out really well. So we'll have different age categories and asking people to take pictures on their favorite open space or recreation field in town and submit those. The winners will get a small prize, and we will use their photos in the open space plan. So we'll be getting out more information as that goes along. I'll be working with Lauren and Erin in the Conservation Office. We'll be helping Janay and I with that. And hopefully, we'll have a new recreation director on board at that time because the rec director will need to be involved as well, so. And we've got several chapters written, and we're in the editing stage and working on maps. So we'll keep you posted on all that.
Thank you. Okay. And the next meeting date is gonna be October 21st?
October 21st, and then November 18th, unless something comes up that would require that we meet sooner.
Okay, sounds good. Any older new business, Wally?
None.
Sue?
I'm just interested in Blueberry Estates.
Yes, so...
Can you report on that?
Oh, sure, yep. So I've been sending you all of their, their weekly reports. So I don't know if you noticed in the last one, National Grid's actually been laying the utility lines, so they will have the utility lines laid for Phase One soon. We're working with the actual subdivision developer, which is a separate developer, once the utilities are put in to finalize enough of the work so that the drainage structures are working for the winter months. So we have met with them, and we're on target to do that. We did have a little bit of tracking onto the subdivision road, and that was mainly from the utility going in and working. So they're going to reestablish the tracking pad. They have a model home up there that's open by appointment. They've been getting a lot of interest in that, and it's coming along rather well. They're keeping a pretty neat site, you know, other than the tracking we've had onto the subdivision roads. So I think our main thing is making sure we get, you know, everything flowing into the structures before the winter season, so.
Is there any timeframe for the first resident to actually be living there?
Well, they're hoping for sometime next spring, but a lot of the delays have come already with the utility.
Okay.
You know, waiting for National Grid, so they, you know, they were hoping to be, I think they'll be much further along before the cold weather hits. If we, however, if we get really cold and really snowy very quickly, that could slow things down, but I think, you know, by spring, mid to late spring, we should really start to see some good progress over there on Phase One in actually making plans to move into Phase Two, so.
Along the road that goes off of 131, that goes up to the residential area there, that's been mostly gonna be commercial.
The lower lots are the commercial lots, yeah.
Is there any interest in that?
So they've listed it with a Realtor. The Realtor's been in several times with, you know, checking permitted uses and things, so, but nothing solid as of this time.
How many air...
There are four others, so.
Do you know what kind of commercial businesses there would be, or are they retailers?
Well, we don't really know yet at this point. When they did the MEPA review, they were hoping to attract something like an assisted living, kind of a, maybe a convenience mart for the people that live there, maybe something like an urgent care or medical office building, but at this time, it's very up in the air. I mean, ideally, that would be a wonderful little neighborhood with a fifty-five plus, an assisted living, a store, and a medical office, but...
Yeah, I have a good idea.
Not really sure what we'll actually get, but, you know, we can, you're welcome.
Anything else?
Nope, I know they're finishing up by Yankee Pedlar.
They are finally finishing out by Yankee Pedlar. They were doing sidewalks today. Unfortunately, the holes are still in the middle of the sidewalks, so it's too bad, but I guess at least it's getting done, and the road will be passable at all times again, which will be a beautiful thing.
Right.
It's waiting in that in the mornings.
And maybe it's the way I envision things happening. The 500 Main Street parking lot, isn't 500...
501.
501. And then the building that's sitting on the edge of that.
Yes.
It's awfully close.
Well, the existing building was awfully close. They're pretty much in the same footprint as the other. If you remember, it was just slightly different. Seriously, it just looks so much different because we've now done the parking lot.
It looks so much bigger.
That's...
The footprint.
They always look bigger when they start to build them.
They do. Every building we have have seen it always...
Really?
Yeah, they always, they always do look bigger, but it is what was proposed. It's in the location that was proposed.
No, I know it was approved, but I'm just questioning our approval when it's sitting so close to the edge of the parking lot.
So it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure, so it went through the zoning board of appeals process and then the planning board site plan process.
Okay.
So because the existing building was pretty much on the property line, this one can be as well.
Yeah, and it's one of the naces of that particular area, because you need that to get the area that you need to have the building as well.
Correct, correct. It just looks like, I hope the land holds.
Well, I think it'll be nice. I mean, you know, the others that they've done, you look at the apartment and the buildings, they're what they were before. I mean, really, the other ones that they've done.
It looks very nice.
Yeah, they've been doing a nice job. And then I can also say about the parking lot, it really has been getting a lot of use in the evenings, so the Duck has actually reported that they've had many, many people using that parking lot and that they see them walking up to Enrico's. And in fact, we've been having conversations about crosswalk because you, you need to go down to Cumberland's to cross over, and because people are darting a cross, so we need to, I don't think DOT will allow us to have another crosswalk, but, you know, ideally, we'd have a crosswalk a little further up the other way, or maybe put, get some of those flashing lights for the other one.
We just put one?
No. No, we can't. I wish we could.
They don't want it happening like every twenty feet either.
Right, I know.
So people do have to sort of walk to find this crosswalk to do it safely.
And the main reason it was over where it is, too, is because, you know, all the apartments, and then a lot of people walk over to Cumberland's to pick things up, and so that's why it was placed where, where it is, so.
Yeah.
I think some of its education may be a little sign crosswalk this way, you know, but I'm glad to hear it's being used a lot.
Yeah, me too. And the other parking lot is looking kind of shabby. The one down, if you continue down twenty on your left across from the black, black building, what's that called, black?
Blackington block.
Blackington building across, remember when we did that nice parking lot? It's looking kind of in need of repair.
It's a gravel parking lot, so...
I know, and it's got a lot of overgrowth?
Right, right.
You know, I just didn't know who's responsible for the upkeep of that.
It's the, it's private property, so, yeah. And then in the back is all wetlands, so they couldn't really cut much back there. If you remember right, we left all that for that reason, and on the side.
Around twenty, it just doesn't look nice. Just, just making a comment.
Yeah, to me, it kind of looks the same as it did from the start.
It looked fresher when it was new, like most things do.
Yes, exactly.
Right. Okay, just, just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if nothing else, then we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.